I'd like to call to order the Shakopee School District's School Board Business Meeting for November 17, 2025. Tiffany, can you please do the roll?
Zeddick?
Here.
Valdez?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Aldridge?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Brophy?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
And Sean.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all. It is with great sadness that the district communicated the past of Ashley Layman on Thursday evening of last week. Ashley joined Shakopee Public Schools in 2012 and started at Sunpath Elementary in the Food and Nutrition Services Department. She then transitioned to a building and grounds role at the Canna Learning Center. In 2018, Ashley was selected as the district's Central Duplicating Lead, formerly at Central Family Center and now at the district office. During her time in the district, Ashley provided incredible support to all buildings and staff members and cared deeply about our work. In 2023, Ashley was recognized by her peers as the district office Employee of the Year. Please join me in honoring Ashley and her family with a moment of silence. Thank you. Normally, this is the favorite part of our meeting, Saber Pride. It's kind of tough to follow now unfortunately, but we will move on to our Saber Pride and start with item 3.1, our Fall Athletics and Activities Report. And here to present is, we'll start with Andy Brown, our Activities Director. Welcome, Andy.
All right. All right, thanks. Greetings, Board, students, superintendents. Always good to be here. It's kind of wild, I'm sure, like this point in the year, you always hear like, how have we come so far already? Like, there's a lot ahead of us, but we've already got things wrapping up and new things are starting and so on. And I have not been here since, I think it was either late May, I believe, and so there are even some things from our summer activities that we just wanted to go over. So, kind of in chronological order here, we'll go back to first speech. The last time I was here, I said we had a few students qualified for NSDA Nationals, including Brian, who's sitting over here. But they went in June and the NSDA is much more difficult of the two national tournaments that we have sent students to. And I think we've had one finalist before. And this year, we had two finalists and a national champion, which is a first for us. So, Bushra Muhammad and Fatima Ahmed, and they're both here, and they'll probably come up for that one. Stand over here. And what's really cool about this is during the regular season and speech, they competed together in a duo category and took seventh in state, right? Okay, sixth, sorry, sorry, sixth in state. And then that category is not offered at the Nationals, and so they split and did new things. And so, Bushra was a champion in poetry and Fatima was a champion in expository. So, we're incredibly proud of them. It's really exciting. Bushra's actually graduated, so she's currently taking classes at Normandale and headed to the University of Minnesota in the spring semester here. So, we're just really proud of them. The trophy, you can kind of tell, it's pretty big. And that's like, that's not just a cheapie plastic one. That one's actually heavy, literally. Yeah, so there's them. We got our certificates.
Do you like to give a five-minute speech on just?
No.
And next, just a recap of our marching band season. You've heard a lot of updates here over the years, so this is stuff that we kind of previewed. But this year, we added Color Guard, purchased a new banner that you can see right in the front there. And so, that's really exciting. I think we have eight Color Guard in addition to the two carrying the banner there. We marched in the state fairs. We have done annually now for three years. And also brought students to participate in this U of M High School Band Day. So, our students are actually sprinkled in that photo there. So, they get delivered to a practice location, one of the used practice fields, at about 5:00 a.m. and get to do some things. They don't do a whole lot of actual marching and formation there, but they learn how to get into this formation and then get to play at half times. We had some Color Guard members there as well. So, a variety of marching bands from across the state all played together with the U of M band. So, they got to do that. So, that's a really good, you know, cool. Every time I say it, it sounds like I'm trying to be so punny, but it's another step forward with the marching band. And we have some ideas about how to take kind of another little one next year and just keep trying to grow the program a little bit. It'll do a little bit more every time. So, there's that. Mountain biking concluded another season here. The team finished 15th in a very competitive division. And just a few highlights as sent over to me by the coaches. I'll skip one and then come back to it. We had two students qualify to ride varsity next season. In the mountain biking world, you have to basically perform high enough to get to that. We don't just get to say these are varsity kids. They have to be riding fast enough. So, Penny Reins is our first girl to qualify for varsity riding ever. And Owen Riley is the first sophomore to qualify for riding varsity. So, if you've been around a few years, you might remember me talking about the first time we had ever gotten a rider qualified for varsity, and that was a few years ago. And if memory serves me, Penny finished sixth at the state tournament in the JV bracket as well. And then it's just interesting to note that Ella Berg and Keenan Meyer, the first two seventh-year seniors that we graduated. Now, that doesn't mean they repeated senior year that many times. It just means that they started as sixth graders, so we had them all the way in. So, they were on the mountain biking team for seven years, which is pretty impressive. And then Oliver Reins was our undefeated state champion as a sixth grader, and he's here, so we'll get him in just a second here as well. So, he won every race that he entered as a sixth grader and then won the state final race, which is at Mount Cado in Mankato. So, very bright future. I don't know how early they let you qualify for varsity, but he will, he'll be on that list before too long. So, and you can say that we knew he would win. So, that's really good. And then, so we'll honor Oliver in just a second. I also just wanted to give a shout out to Kyle Saboda, who's been our assistant coach for, I believe, 11 years, I think I have that right. And Kyle's been very instrumental in building the program and is stepping down, intends to continue volunteer coaching here and there, but is just ready to pass some of the reins of the program on. And Kyle has just done such an incredible job for us over the years, building that program. So, I just wanted to recognize him, and he's here, so Kyle can wave, and we can tell him what a great job he's done. And whenever I talk to the mountain biking coaches about anything that's going on, it's just amazing how student-centered they are and just thinking, how can we create the best experience for kids at all times? And then we'll have Oliver come up for the photo op. We'll give a round of applause to our undefeated senior. All right, we'll keep moving through. Trap Club has a season summer into the fall as well, finished second in their conference. One highlight was Wyatt Gustafson was fifth in the conference in scoring average. 10 of the 14 students competed well enough to earn a varsity letter. And over the course of the season, they recorded six perfect 25s, which means that they send 25 of the clay pigeons up and they got all 25 of them in a round. So, that's a pretty impressive, impressive thing to do. So, just to recap there, they've had kind of some struggles in numbers here and there, dipping down a little bit, but there's a new setup to have two different seasons, which they're kind of hoping is going to give them an opportunity to recruit and get a little bit more. Middle School Fall Play just opened and wrapped last weekend. It was called Everything You Always Wanted to Know About Your Teachers, but Were Afraid to Ask. And so, kind of like last year's show, which was the first year of the middle school play, we're just trying to do something that's a lot of small vignettes, so a lot of kids get an opportunity to get on stage and say a couple lines and so on. But we had 61 kids audition for this, and they made the cast as big as they could, I think, in this play. And it was over 40, and that means we have to start talking about what it looks like to do two plays at the middle school level, just create a better opportunity. You know, we have this many kids showing up. We want to try to find better places for all of them. So, a good problem to have, for sure. And then we have Debate is currently in season and competing at the varsity level, which is for the most part, other than a couple of kids who said, I think I can try it, even though they weren't really ready for it. We now have kids competing at the varsity level in about our fifth serious year of Debate here. And Rohan Bakati was our first-ever tournament champ, taking first place at a tournament in Minnetoka. They are not done with their season yet, though, so. And of course, it just goes on and on and on, and there's so many things happening. So, just to pull out a few, our ALIS group had the Fiesta Latina, which is sort of, in some ways, a miniature, more focused version of the big culture fest that we do. And they do that during Latin American Heritage Month. Also, we've sent kids to the Fall Leadership Conference. Deca had kids go to the Back to Business Conference that they have. Our Unlimited Dance Group performed at the Pep Fest football games. They've got basketball. They're taking a brief hiatus and then will resume in order to perform at some basketball half times. We got through Homecoming Week. Student Council hosted a really successful Powder Puff game again, raised about $3,500 for the Pinky Square Foundation. And our Chess Club season just sort of wrapped. There's a conference tournament like all the way in February, but their regular competition schedule is over. And we had by far our most successful individual sophomore, Sam Solberg, went 6-1 and won. And so, we've, our best players have always floated a little below 500 in the conference schedule because there's some real powerhouse teams, but Sam Solberg is a real wizard there. So, we've had a jazz concert where they played as they usually do in the fall with, they open essentially for a local big band that comes and plays, and that was a lot of fun. Red Cross Club had a big blood drive, and the Yearbook Club is getting that thing going. So, that's like, I mean, we're just barely touching on it, but just trying to, you know, give you that little flavor of how many big and exciting things are going on with our students. Coming soon, as in three days from now, is Legally Blonde, our fall musical here. And so, that's Thursday through Sunday, two shows on Saturday. I will see you all there. Tickets on GoFan. All right, and I think, and then I just had a couple other things just to touch on real quick that are coming up. Our middle school musical in January, or Little, it starts in January. We'll perform, I think, the first weekend in March is going to be Mary Poppins. Lead is sponsoring a big toy drive, as they usually do in cooperation with Nikasa, and so they'll be running that soon. Our competition one-act play is a show called Badger. It's kind of a Rosie the Riveter story, taking place in Wisconsin. So, come see it anyway. And choir band concerts, of course, in December, and so many things. So, that's just giving you the whole flavor there. I will turn it over to Matt in a moment here, and then I'll see you again to tell you about some new clubs a little further down the agenda. Have we got any questions or anything curious about? Anything you want to hear a little more about? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. See you again real soon.
Next up is our Athletics Director, Matt Hanson, and he has several guests with him, so we'll give him a little time to listen to him.
Okay, so our first group that we're going to recognize is our swim team. And Coach Alex Krapp has a few words to talk about our season.
Yeah, so to start off, through our regular season, our conference season, the girls ended up getting third, which is a really great place to be, especially in our difficult conference. And then that transitioned into sections where we placed third there. And even a steeper competition, we had to go against Edina Minnetoka. And then that transitioned into this team here, our state team. Starting from the left to right, we have Elena Brinkman, a senior. And then we have Madeline Hansen, who is a senior, Grace, I always mess up your last name, Grace Krael Kramer. God, junior. Madeline Francois, who is, oh, Miranda. Did I? I messed that up. Miranda Francois, who is a freshman, who did a really good state this year. And then we have Gabriella Morris, who is a 10th grader, and then 11th grader, going to be a senior. And then Lexi Tiffy, who is a junior. And then we have Haley Kern, who is a senior. And then we have Kaylee Beeson, who is a 9th grader. And then Gillian Stenzel, who is a 10th grader. And then Janessa Centers, who is a 10th grader. And so, that's our state team, and then we'll go through the results kind of at state. Starting with the 200 Medal Relay, we qualified for finals and we got eighth place. And then the next, we had the 203. We had a state champion, Lexi Tiffy. Very hard to beat to be state champion, especially that's not even a senior, so we get to have her back to go again. And then the 200 IM, we had Janessa, who got sixth place there. And then next event, we had the 200 Freestyle Relay, which got eighth place. And then we had the 100 Butterfly, where we got third place. And then the 100 Freestyle, we got third place. And then the 100 Breaststroke, we got seventh place. So, especially how that state tournament kind of goes is that you need to make finals on the first day and then it's top 16 with a lot of talented teams. And even with smaller schools can have that great swerve that takes another spot. So, to have so many finalists that made top eight is an awesome, awesome place to be, especially with all the young talent that's on the team. Yeah, you guys have any questions?
It was awesome to be able to watch.
Yeah, were you handing out medals?
I was.
Pretty awesome. We had a lot of, a lot of kids out there. Yeah.
And I was supposed to be there. I was pretty happy to be somewhere around there.
Oh, really? Well, thanks for being there. And thank you guys for all your support and our A.D. event, so thank you guys very much.
We'll just take it this way. They're all so nice.
All right. Next up, pinch hitting for Coach Haskins, because he is at our track and field conference meeting this evening, is Coach Seal, and she'll tell us a little bit about the season and about the one.
So, our 2025 cross-country season was a great season for our team. Both the boys and girls teams have smaller and younger teams this year, but we have a few key upperclassmen leaders. And this team showed a lot of dedication and improvement throughout the season, which was highlighted on our team trip to Sioux Falls, where many of our runners had their season PRs. A major highlight for our season was Owen Stewie. Stewie re-broke his own school record this year, improving his best time from last year from 15:37 to 14:49 in the 5K. That's real fast. That's really fast. This time is now 55 seconds faster than the previous school record holder. So, Owen qualified for the Minnesota State High School Cross Country Meet this year and placed second at state. And honestly, I think he would have gotten first, but we had, a crazy kid was there before him. This is the highest Shakopee cross-country boys ever finish in school history. So, he is at the top of all of our records. And congratulations to Owen on a great cross-country season and cross-country career.
And then our last team to qualify for state this fall was our adapted soccer team. And Coach Jeff Hager is here to talk about our season.
I'm Coach Hager. I've coached this team for about five years now. And we ended up taking eight games. We were eight and two, or six and two in the season, six and oh in our conference. Paul Piper State, and we ended up getting fourth place in state. Two of my players here are Isaac, he's a sophomore at high school, and Kelly, who is a 8th grader. 8th grader. And then two other players, we have Gavin Remmers, 10th grade, and then Drew Henen, who's one of our student managers, who are able to make it tonight.
Great job, guys.
What's up?
You like soccer?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, guys. Say "colivers."
Sorry, he didn't smile after.
All right, it's always nice to be able to celebrate, not only with our coaches, but also with our athletes when they're able to be here. Next up is our football team, and our football team, little bit of an up and down season this year. They started the season on a tremendous high. They beat Lakeville South, who ended up being state semifinalist at home. It was a really crazy game. Came down a couple fourth-down stops. It was really fun to watch them. But we kind of had the injury bug this year, and so we ended up four and four in the regular season. We ended up hosting Stillwater in the first round of playoffs. We beat Stillwater, and then we were on the road for the section championship up in Centennial. We played a really, really good first half. Second half, we just didn't come out on top. But at one point, we played the season with 10 of our starters out with injuries. So, in 6A, it's a very grinding schedule, so when you lose about half of your starters, sometimes the winds don't come their way. But still a really good season for our boys. The third place finish, or excuse me, the fifth place finish ended up getting us 12 players selected to the all-district team, which is quite an accomplishment there. Some of our athletes will still receive honors as we continue on in the next couple weeks. And then we look forward to seeing what we can do next year. This group of seniors was one of our better groups to come through, winning some district titles, section titles, and then making it to the bank last year. So, a lot to be proud of with our football group and a good group coming next year. Our next team is our girls tennis team, and our tennis team had about a 500 season. They finished the season at 7 and 8 on the year. It was fifth place in the South Suburban Conference. Their first-round matchup in sections was against the defending section champions in Eden Prairie, and we had a thrilling 4-3 match. It was over three hours, which is pretty fun. That means most of the individual matches were going to three sets, which is really cool. We eventually, that second round, we lost to Minnetoka, who ended up going to state this year and finishing, I believe, in third place there. As individuals, all of our girls competed very well in the section tournament. It's one of the tournaments that I help run for the state high school league, so it's fun to see our girls not only in the regular season, but also competing in the section tournament as well. This year, we changed locations for our section tournament. We usually go down to Gust Davis, but being a more metro section, as they added a third class this year, we were up at 98th Street in Bloomington. So, it was a little bit of a different venue, but our girls played really well. Again, we have a little bit of a younger team, so we should be returning quite a few of them for next year. Our next group to talk about is our girls volleyball team. It was a little bit of a tougher season for volleyball. We started off a little bit on a losing streak, so we were, it took a little bit of a while to get our first win. But we ended up 11 and 17 overall. It was good enough for seventh place in the South Suburban Conference. At one point, as we started a little bit slow, we got hot right in the middle. We won seven of nine matches in the middle of our season before we had a few tough losses at the end of the season. As we've talked in the past, the South Suburban Conference and then Region 2AA are incredibly competitive. To show like how strong we were this year in volleyball, we had three of the top four teams in the state in our section. So, the state champion, the runner-up, and the third-place team, all in the South Suburban. And arguably, Egan should have beat another team, so we could have had half of the field from our section, or conference home. So, a very, very tough conference that we participate in, just with a ton of depth. We were on the road for our first-round matchup. It ended up against Prior Lake, and we lost in three sets. But as a whole, it was a really good group of girls, only graduating a few. So, we look to have a little bit better season next year, bounce back with a few more wins from our girls volleyball team. Our next group is our girls soccer team. Last year, our girls soccer team was four games under 500, and so this year, they were 9, 7, and 1, which was really a great accomplishment for this group. They're fifth place in the conference. This, again, is one of our younger teams. We had a couple older girls, Emily Lopez, Emily Lee, Reese Craig, but the rest of our team was mostly 9th and 10th graders. So, to finish with an above 500 record against a really good competitive section and region is quite an accomplishment. We ran into the Lakers again, so we had quite a few matchups when it was us versus Prior Lake at the end this year. And they were a little bit better than us. We were down 2 to 1, just into the second half, playing well. But they were pretty strong, so they scored a few at the end to secure the win. But similar to what we've heard with some of our girls' sports this year, very, very young group of fall athletes, so we look forward to a bright future for our girls soccer team as well. And then our final team tonight is boys soccer. And boys soccer, if you remember last year, they lost just an absolute heartbreaker to Minnetoka in double overtime. So, and they had quite a few seniors, so we weren't quite sure what this year was going to be. But they had a strong season. They were 6, 5, and 5, so quite a few ties on the year. And the regular season had a little bit of a change in the last two years for boys and girls soccer. They weren't allowed to play overtime, so if you ended at the end of regulation, it was just a tie. It used to be that you played overtime. I'm not sure what the statistics were, if anybody scored in those five minutes, but it's just, it's a non-factor this year, or last year and this year, until you get to playoffs. So, but they were fourth place in the conference. We played quite a few one-goal games, which was a testament to not only our players, but our coaching staff, keeping our boys into it all the way till the end. We ended up losing to Eden Prairie in the first round of the playoffs, 2 to nothing. But again, just played well in the entirety of the season and that game. But again, just played well in the entirety of the season and that game. As I've stated before, Coach Poppen does a great job. He's one of our coaches that really focuses not only on our season, but also on the community aspect. And so we had quite a few events where we engaged the entire soccer community throughout the, not only the season, but the summer. So it's always fun to see our boys soccer do well. And then the last item to talk about is we had signing day last Wednesday. So we had five athletes sign their letter of intent or contracts as they're now becoming with the NCAA. And so from left to right on the picture is Sadie Hall and she's going to play basketball at Houston Christian University. Next to Sadie is Emily Lopez. She's going to play soccer at Indiana State University. In the middle is Kaiser Borin and he signed to play baseball at Southwest Minnesota State University. Going to UMD is Kayden Olson for baseball as well. And then on our far right is Kyler Walters and he's going to wrestle at the University of Wyoming. So this is one of three opportunities for our students to sign. We'll have one that's more specific to football in December and then we'll have a spring one where we kind of get everybody that we may have missed early, middle or late, and then that will happen in May. So good group there and we look forward to a bigger group once we get towards the end of the season. That's our fall athletics. And we're already into winter. We started the girls hockey, has already had a couple of games. They play tomorrow night and then the basketball resting at first practice today and we'll get into some more games there. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt.
All right. Thank you.
Continuing our saber pride, next up is item 3.2, our Minnesota Community Education Association statewide project award. And Tiffany Olson, our Director of Communications and Strategic Development, will present.
Yes, and I am really just the messenger as I normally am Chair Smith and good news. So they'll have Lisa around, our Director of Community Ed and know what she may have with going to introduce here in a second. And I just get to toast you so that it's not awkward to me as well. And you can share a couple actually. But if you want to introduce Lisa, would you help with you?
Sure. I'm Chris Younger. She is a program coordinator for Community Ed and focuses in on youth enrichment. And Joel Mulder, and he's on the RVTC Board of Directors.
So we've had the pleasure of highlighting many awards. Community Ed has been here before in front of you for various reasons. Obviously, our theater is great too within the district partnerships. Last week of October is when we got to receive this award and I believe it was nine other districts that looked like received awards of some capacity for community education. So in good company on that side too. Awards highlighting just the innovation and impact. So I want to bring out those two words when it was shared with us, what this group did together. Those are two things that stood out. And paraphrasing information that Lisa has shared with us is that the partnership has been very strong since 2012. And together, we've produced 30 plays, engaging over 1,000 young performers and really just trying to speak to what we do as a community. So like your 60-second rundown of how awesome all of this is, if you can share the excitement that you all had at the last week of October, I know our board would love to experience that as well.
Sure. Well, I think for us, it's just highlighting the partnership that we've had with RVTC and being able to show that off not only to the state organization, but here at the board level. Because it's been going on for so long, it just has been a great honor to work with RVTC and to provide opportunities for youth. You know, it's really a theater program for the plays that you saw on the screen earlier for middle school and for high school and things like that. And they start at the community ed level and they start with RVTC and our community ed programs. And I'll let you guys, if you want to say anything too.
You kind of said it all, but yeah. Don't give anything later.
Speaking from RVTC, it really has been great to work with Community Ed throughout these years, helping engage young people all the way up to adults in community ed here as we've learned programs. It's been a great partnership.
All very proud and thank you.
I just brought people.
We should do a picture since you have to be away. Let's go and do a picture. I don't know if we say Culvers for the summer.
I see you're working really well.
One, two, three.
Culvers. Well, we were really doing it.
Next on our agenda is item four, the consideration of the agenda is presented.
So who?
Second.
We have a motion by Brophy and a second by Aldrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Post? Carries. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time where members of the public can participate in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. Requests are not processed on an overall first come, first served basis. There is an element of first come, first served representing a specific viewpoint on a particular topic. If more than six speakers sign up for public comment, topics and speakers will be prioritized. Topics on this evening's agenda take priority over those topics not on the agenda. Speakers living within the school district take priority over those from outside the district. When speakers plan to share differing perspectives on the same topic, an effort is made to balance the quantity of speakers on each side of the topic. Public comment is conducted in accordance with school board policy 206, which can be found on the school district website. Persons who wish to address the school board during public comment must sign a prior to the start of the school board meeting and should provide their name and the subject to which comments pertain. Only those persons who have been recognized by the board chair will be allowed to speak during public comment or at any time during the school board meeting for that matter. No personal attacks will be allowed on any district employee, including school board members. As a reminder, school board members will typically only listen and not interact in any way with a public comment speaker. The board may at its discretion ask questions for clarification of an issue. We have one person sign up tonight and that is Marlene Bad Warrior. Welcome.
Yatay Shin Marlene Bad Warrior. Hello, good evening. My name is Marlene Bad Warrior. I am of the Saltwater Clan, born for the Charcoal Street Division of the Red Running into the Water People Clan. It's a long way. My maternal grandfather is of the Tangle Clan and my paternal grandfather is of the Bitter Water Clan. This is how I recognize myself as a natural woman. Thank you, board members and administration for hearing my words this evening in support of the Dakota Language and Culture Course approval into the curriculum. As the current Native American Parent Committee Chair, the approval of an indigenous language being integrated into the curriculum would be a positive step in the direction of acknowledging the original peoples of this area, the Shakopee, the Wakanipin, Dakota. We are all aware of the damage that boarding school institutions have had on our tribal nations and the significant loss of language and culture in that era. While many people continue to harbor ill feelings from this time, there are many of us who took, who look instead to create collaborative opportunities for children to have their culture and language reintegrated within their school spaces. One of the prevailing factors of Native American student retention and education is the ability for their culture and identities to be seen. With this approval, you are showing these students you value their cultural education just as much as they do. As a parent of a Lakota child, I speak on behalf of this future, of his future and that of all Dakota children to have the privilege of not only learning foreign languages in this space, but also their own languages. On behalf of the parent committee, we hope for a unanimous decision of support to show receptive curiosity to the Shakopee tribe and the continues given to this community. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you. And Tiffany has it posted on the screen. Personnel items, four minutes, bills, authorizations, wires, equipment sales, field trip approvals.
Mr. Chair, does this mean that board members get to go to Costa Rica and go on a roller scheme if we approve it?
There are some really nice looking field trips.
I'd like a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Aldrich. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one question. I noticed a couple of these, like Jeka and I believe the Bodmore strip, they fall outside of what would be the traditional school of year, but they still require a call of board approval for the policy on field trips.
Good enough. Thank you.
Chair Smith, I'm here too. I see that we're approving the new ed sort of culture today and I just wanted to thank Jamie Carlson for her previous work with that team last year.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Post? Next on our agenda is a resolution for donations approval. And Tiffany has the donations up on the screen.
Make a motion to approve.
Seven.
A motion by Brophy and a second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Just want to acknowledge the generosity again from the community. This goes on and on. Very generous.
Including Culvers. Seeing no further discussion. Tiffany, can please do the roll.
Zeta?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next on our agenda are two action items, starting with 8.1. This is student club activity addition. And Andy Brauner, Activities Director, is back to present.
Student Club Edition is brought to you by Chipotle. All right. Can't help myself. Okay, so just three things to talk about really quickly. It's been a little while since we've popped up here. The rise of student clubs has slowed down a little bit because I think because I say yes so much, we get all sorts of things. So just a reminder of kind of how we typically do it is when students come to me, we have an application that they need to fill out, has board policies attached to it and I meet with them and talk to them about some good practices and usually don't bring them to the board until they prove to have legs a little bit because sometimes kids have a couple of interest meetings and no one really shows up and then they go. So usually that's kind of how that works. Typically for student-run clubs, we find a staff advisor and I talk with them about kind of how intense they want their involvement to be. Sometimes it's just being in the room and other times it's helping out a lot more and pay them a small step in. And then there's another tier and I'll explain that in a minute. I'm just kind of reminding you because these two clubs fall in some different spots. So Club America is a student-run club. That'll be the third that kind of fall on our, on our bottom tier and this is a club. I'll kind of pull it right from the application here, which I had opened just a moment ago, that they're about basically creating a safe and open environment for people to share thoughts and opinions, learn from each other and deepen an understanding of political and faith-based topics. So when we hear those political and faith-based within the, within the school district, we just make sure that it falls a little bit differently. So this lands in kind of the same tier as our fellowship with Christian Athletes and our Muslim Student Association. So according to equal access laws, we give them a place and we find, I help them find supervision. A lot of times the kids find it on their own, but that's a supervisor, not an advisor. And then we don't spend any school resources on groups like this other than, you know, the cost incurred of like, you know, using a room with the lights on. A space on the website, things like that. And then they have a disclaimer as well that goes on the signs that they put in the school and on their website, things like that. So yeah, so that's just kind of where this one sits. So this club hasn't really quite kicked off yet, but just, just given the nature of it, we ran it through right away. So their goal is basically just to, to create a little forum for kids to, you know, broaden their understanding of various issues. So there's that one, the STEM Club, started by a student named Dee Wright, supervised by Charles Radmacher, who's an active physics teacher. And they're just kind of engaged in just trying to figure out ways for kids to explore areas of STEM, maybe particularly the science aspect beyond what the curriculum has. So trying to find some kids who maybe want to do some projects, take some outings, do some things like that. The first thing they're looking at, they just started exploring if there's a way to do kind of a school-wide science fair, kind of a almost anachronistic idea when you think about it. We have so many of those things going on, but like I said, they're just interested in stuff that's, that goes outside of the, you know, outside of what's already in the curriculum. I also want to talk about girls flag football. I don't know if we need to take the action first and I'll come back to that. Just want to keep going.
Is that also on the agenda or?
It is just a little, but it's more information.
It's just information? Why don't we, why don't we vote first on the action item?
Or if we have questions?
And I guess I did one question that I made. So with respect to Stan, does some of that potentially dovetail into like we've got some great partners with our Academy of Champions opportunities there? Is it, you know, I know it's outside, you mentioned outside the curriculum. Do I actually have that ones?
Yeah, certainly could. Yeah, they're just a little, like just kind of getting off the ground and, you know, a student who is really, really passionate about getting, getting something like this going and they're just trying to kind of figure out their direction based on the kids who are showing up and what they want to do. So yeah, I think we'll, I'll be really aware of it at least whenever they bring them back. So yeah, thanks for the reminder.
I'd like a motion to approve the club's additions as presented.
Second.
A motion by Peterson and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Post? And then you had a informational item about the girls flag football.
Yeah, so just, so just because it kind of falls under this, just wanted to give you an update because I know people are talking about it and I've gotten some questions about it. So the brief history is that girls flag football started kind of a small pilot league two years ago, sponsored by the Vikings. And I want to say it had like eight teams in it, might have been just a little bit larger than that. And so following that, there, we got a little, a few questions here and there about are we going to bring this to Shakopee next year? And I kind of shopped around the communication that I'd received about it, trying to see if we could find a coach, knowing it probably would kind of be volunteer, see if there's anyone who was really willing to spearhead it. And all own that I didn't, I didn't look real hard, but pushed it around to a few people that I knew that I thought might be interested, asked a number of people to pass it on through the football association and things, but didn't really, didn't really find anyone who was willing to kind of take it on with sort of this, you know, just nebulous approach or this sort of up in the air. I don't know if I can compensate, things like that. And then, and then just about everybody else added it. I think us and Prior Lake are like the, just about the only schools in the metro that didn't jump on girls flag football. So of course now we've got even more questions because it's been more visible. So, so we started talking about it over the summer even and Jamie Grossman, who's our girls hockey coach, was willing to kind of just spearhead it for now and kind of be the, you know, sort of program manager as we looked into it. So where we're at now is that we have a grant in to the, to the Vikings. They, that they provide money, kind of startup funds. And we've talked to a number of other coaches of other programs and kind of created a budget. But I don't really have an ask yet because the ask is a little dependent on the grant and some of those things in terms of what we might need to get and what, what we can do. And so in terms of if we're going to be able to pay coaches or just need to ask for volunteers this year and so on. We've also done a couple of things to figure out interest and feasibility and we had 182 seventh through 12th graders respond to our survey and say, I'd be interested in playing flag football. That's only like four times as many as we can handle on three rosters. So, but it's a very encouraging sign. So we have that. And then Jamie helped just a free-to-attend kind of flag football, try it before the weather gets bad basically, and ran a couple of sessions and had over 60 kids show up to that and just kind of see what it's about. So we know that the interest is there and then we're just trying to look in. We should hear about the grant in December and then I'll likely come back with a more refined ask of we want to support this as an activity. I know the state high school league will be looking at it, but for now the mode is just kind of to sponsor it and fit it in under my activities umbrella and see where we can go with it. So and we have talked about also because of those big numbers and the rosters are pretty small. Even um, even if we have varsity JV in ninth grade that they intend to have. So we're talking about maybe there's possibility there for, um, an intramural league, um, which Chris Younger is finding out right now that she'll probably help me with. So we, we've run our intramurals through community ed and it's a really good way to run those. So that's something that we've talked about. If our interest stays high, we might need to do that as a supplement, um, as well in the spring. So, um, happy to field any questions about that too.
I just know I was this afternoon at a meeting I was in, there was 102, so.
Yeah.
That's higher than the metro.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's crazy. And it's, it's five on five and I think the roster max is 15. And, and so varsity JV, uh, point nine three as well, still only 45 slots there, so. Yeah, so we'll kind of see how it shakes out.
And I think the grant from the Vikings is for three years. Does that neck or do you have to apply every year?
Nothing that I saw was about recurring funds, at least in the application portion of it that happened, so I'm not totally sure. All right.
Thank you, Andy.
So, not tonight, but you'll probably see me again next year. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is another action item. Oh, okay, I made point two, uh, school calendars for 26, 27 and 27, 28. And, uh, Dr. Redmond will present.
Yeah, no, those feel Anderson's name was on the agenda item. I think that's really in recognition of, you know, there are a lot of people involved. Dale does an incredible amount of work in terms of helping coordinate and, uh, kind of, you know, take a look at this from multiple perspectives. But we've shared this previously and it, uh, the calendar fits our, our typical parameters. We present, uh, the next two years of K-12 school calendars as often happens. You know, we approve this, the K-12 calendar and then we come back and look for the, the early learning. Uh, they, they build, you know, kind of with that, if you will, for their program. So happy to try to answer questions, otherwise, uh, would, you know, it's an action item and certainly would recommend approval. A lot of, a lot of really good work has gone into this for a couple of months now. I think it's well done and, um, it's all those, those criteria that we've shared previously.
Chair, some more questions. Comment, Dr. Redmond, would you share again the only part of this that might be a little unusual that parents and students might ask about is the starting before Labor Day? And how it fits into the, the school calendar and timelines to work better this way?
Yeah, a few, uh, a few, I'll, I'll hop back up. We've got, uh, I believe it'd be the two dates this coming year and the following year where Labor Day, I think, is as late as it can be and one day from being as late as it can be. And so state legislature has given, uh, school districts in Minnesota, uh, permission for next school year and the year that follows to start the school, start the school year prior to Labor Day, which both of these calendars do. Uh, the expectation would be that the following year, the third year out, we'd be back to starting after Labor Day. It's just would be, uh, exceptional, late Labor Days the next two years. If we started after, we would be getting out close, you know, kind of pushing into mid-June. And so, uh, this will actually, in terms of the days on a calendar, feel pretty similar to previous years. Just happens that with, you know, that Labor Day is going to fall a little bit later. And we've done a number of things, you know, to accommodate the long weekends still for Labor Day and things like that. So we think it's a pretty good, uh, uh, kind of a way to handle that, uh, kind of unusual two-year calendar situation. Thank you for asking. I should have mentioned that.
I have one question, uh, for the 27, 28 square. It looks like our fall break or the old M E A, whatever you refer to it now as, seems like it might be a week later than typical years. The year before is the 13th, 14th, 15th. When I'm looking at the calendar here. 14th, 15th, 16th. So I know that we've had some discussions about this, um, at the State High School League because of many schools starting early before Labor Day and with this fall that it potentially, um, might conflict with how, um, football playoffs and regular season are maybe. So I just want to make sure that those dates are.
Is it the Thursday of the month of those?
Yeah. That's probably right because it starts on the first, October of 27, it starts on the first. That makes sense.
Is that why it's only?
Yeah, I just looked it up. It's October 21, 2027. And that is also because of the late Labor Day too. I think some of that timing, you know, kind of pushes that on, so.
I don't understand. And it's every, what, seven years or six years if this happens?
It would be in this sense.
Thank you.
I'm glad you spoke up. And just a quick comment, it's noted on here, but it also, uh, so his graduation ceremony follows this calendar as well. Because typically graduation is the Saturday following, uh, that, I call it, uh, end of the school year. So graduation is directly a week earlier for both of these years as well. Further discussion? Uh, just my thanks to Dale for his work on this. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Hope that they have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
This is a team effort for those watching. Everybody keeps me honest. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Valdez?
Second.
The second by Brophy. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we move to a couple of information items. Item 9.1, our monthly budget, uh, update with, uh, our finance director, David Jaskovic.
Welcome. First time I get to do this, so I'm excited. So this is what you're looking at is the general fund for October 31st. It is our budget to actuals for FY 25, 26. If you take a look at state aids, we are trending at 15.68%. It is down from previous fiscal years, but that is because, you know, so the state can meter, meter their payments. So we will receive those later on. We will receive those payments. I, I would see those trend, that those numbers would increase as we move through all the fiscal year. Federal aids are on par with fiscal year. You may ask, how are we negative $4,600? That is due to our accounting standards. We do book receivables as of June 30th and then reversal of receivables as July 1st, which we are looking to receive that additional $4,260. And then as we move through the next few weeks or so, we should start drawing down on those federal aids, um, for our federal programs. Uh, property taxes, we did receive our one-time payment in October. We'll receive another one in November, so that is $9,446,000. So that is trending on par with previous fiscal years. Our local fees, interest, ETC, um, is a little bit above par. It is mostly because our interest earned revenue is doing better than budgeted. So we will, when we come revised, we'll increase those numbers. Um, and that is at $1,057,493. If I turn your attention to expenditures, um, salary and wages are slightly above previous fiscal years, um, due to our positive trend in enrollment, um, seeing numbers that are better than our budgeted numbers. We've added some staff to keep the enrollment class sizes down to what we had approved. Um, so those are trending on par with previous fiscal years, except for those additional staff. We will revise the budget and you'll see that adjustment in roughly around February. Um, that goes also for employee benefits. That is trending just a little above, um, previous fiscal years at $6.1 million. Um, and that is due to those additions in staffing. Uh, purchase services is trending on par at 24.66% of previous fiscal years. And along with supplies, that is a little bit above, that is due to prepaid. It's an expenditure that happens in June, but the really expenditure is recognized in July. So that is just accounting standards, as John Aldrich would know. Equipment is trending on par, is slightly down, but this is due to timing, um, when we are doing projects, LTFM projects around the district when we're making, making those equipment purchases. Other expenditures, this is another one, is trending above where we were previous fiscal year. This is another prepaid. We, we saw the expenditure come in in June. We booked it as a prepaid, recognize it July as an expenditure. Overall, um, I think we're looking good for this fiscal year. As time goes on, we'll get a better estimate where we're sitting, where we're sitting budget to actuals. Any questions?
Um, considering we are $13 million over with expenditures over received, how are we doing on cash flows to be fine?
Fantastic question. We are doing great on cash flows because we receive in June. In May, we receive tax payments for this current fiscal year of FY 26, 20, or FY 25, 26. We received those in the previous fiscal year, so we're doing well on cash flows. We do have that money sitting in the bank. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next on our agenda is item 9.2, comprehensive achievement and civic readiness and achievement and integration. And here to present are Ray Betten and Sarah Werwood. Welcome.
Okay, Nick is gonna, let's stay back there. Okay, I'm setting a timer for us just to go stay on schedule. So I'm going to present on last year's comprehensive achievement and civic readiness plan. So this will be 2004, 2005 data. And this will queue up right to talk about our achievement and integration plan. And hopefully you'll see how they're connected and related to each other throughout. So now this plan, it is a, it's an annual requirement through M D E. It has replaced the world's best workforce. And you've seen this in different iterations and it's just more of a rebrand, but very similar packaging. There are five C A C R goal areas. First one, all students ready for school. Second one, close the achievement gaps between student groups. Third one, all students ready for college career. Fourth, all students graduate. And fifth, all students prepared to be lifelong learners. So with each goal area, districts will choose a metric and they'll follow that metric throughout the years to track their progress. Uh, what I want to do for you is just quickly point out the connections between our post five C A C R goal areas and our current programming. So this is, I mean, it's similar to our district strategic plan. These are the areas that we are working towards, uh, with all of the programming that we offer. So the federal programming, the state programming and local programming, all of this aligns to those five C A C R goal areas. So the first goal, all students ready for school. Uh, the metric that we've been following is 60% of our incoming kindergarten students will be low risk on the fall task reading assessment. Our goal is 60%. So last year, 55.2% of incoming kindergarten students were at low risk in the fall. For that second area, closing the achievement gap between student groups, our goal, the percentage of Hispanic students enrolled in Shakopee who are proficient on the MCA and M test reading tests will increase from 30.1% in the spring of 2022 to 40.1% by spring of 2025. So I wonder if that is a, a multi, it is a multi-year goal. Uh, we are at 31%. The second goal in this category, the percentage of black students enrolled in Shakopee public schools who are proficient on the MCA and M test reading tests will increase from 45.3% to 55.3%. Our result was 38.5% of black students are proficient in this. The next goal area, all students ready for career in college. Um, the, our goal, our first goal was the percentage of black students enrolled in Shakopee public schools who are proficient on the MCA and M test math tests will increase from 45.3% to 55.3%. Last spring, we were at 24.8% of black students proficient. Second goal, percentage of students enrolled in Shakopee public schools who are proficient on the math, MCA math tests will increase from 37.8%. So this is all students. In the spring of 2022 to 45% by spring of 2025. So we were at 42.8%. All students graduating, our goal, um, Shakopee High School ended the 2022, 23 school year with 80.73% of students on track to graduate. Uh, the goal is moving that up to 85%. Uh, last year, we had 90.45% of Shakopee High School students on track to graduate. Last one, all students prepared to be lifelong learners. The average, the goal was our average ACT score for all Shakopee students will increase from a composite score of 20 to a composite score of 21 by spring of 2025. Our average composite score was 19.5. So that's kind of big picture, State of the Union. Um, we are doing some things really, really well. We have a lot of things to celebrate. There are some things that we need to focus on and we really need to focus on how our students are doing, especially our Hispanic and black students. So that is something we're paying a lot of attention to. And Ray gets to talk about some of our efforts through the achievement and integration. Oh, I took more time. I'm sorry. You have five minutes left.
No problem, no problem. Um, thanks for having me. Um, I'm talking about our achievement and integration. All right. So the first thing, um, I've got five goals I'm going to share with you tonight. Um, these are about those progress report goals that I kind of talk about each year on this time. This will be the last year of these goals that we've been doing for three years. Um, I'll talk to you at the end about, you know, what's going to be coming forward after that. But what you see in bold are the bucket areas that M D E, um, wants us to look at for each district and be better part of the A and I program. So our first goal, um, we looked at our black and Hispanic students when it comes to, uh, kids enrolling concurrent or, um, advanced placement courses. 16.3% of Shakopee students, um, in grade six through 12 are Hispanic. 9.6 of those students are enrolled in, um, concurrent or, uh, advanced placement courses. We're trying to get that same number, that 16.3 to be the same representation in those advanced placement courses with, we get that one if we talk about the ratio. Uh, with our black students at 16.3, believe it or not, we had Perry run those numbers three or four times because we were like, are you sure that's the right 16.3? It is. 16.3% of our Shakopee students are black. 11.6 of them are enrolled in advanced placement courses. How we, how they got there, uh, we looked at avid, our avid programming, our caring committed conversations, which I'll talk about a little bit later, positive peer campaigning, um, which, you know, having kids talk about their experiences in those class, uh, in those classes. And then, uh, teacher talent scouts, teachers, you know, saying, hey, um, I mean, I've, I've had teachers have been coming to my own side and say, hey, I think you should get into this class. You seem to be doing really well in this. Why don't you get into this advanced placement course? And, you know, so it's having the teachers get out there, talk to these kids as well, trying to get more kids involved. Goal two, um, you know, 85% is the, is the state goal for graduation rate on time. Um, because that's the state goal. If you look to the right there in the box, you know, if you look at our subgroups, um, there's a 90.5, 90.45. And then there's our American, all, all seven of our American Indian group, 100% Asian, black. Hispanic group was the only one that fell a little short of the 85%. Again, how did we get there? You know, we've got our, our, our experts working, our check and connect groups, um, affinity groups, avid, care and committed conversation, and just more cultural mirrors. You know, we're looking at, you know, at adding more teachers of color to our district, uh, paras, professionals. And just, I mean, all, all around the district, that number's gone up. Um, and having those kids have those conversations and things like that, I think has helped us. Goal three, our family engagement nights, um, for our, for our black families. Uh, we started this goal two years ago. You know, and I think the, the big thing was we had, last year we had over 175 families attend different family engagement nights across the district. And I think one of the biggest things was our cultural liaisons. Um, a lot of times we're doing a lot of, um, translations, documents, and we changed their role to cultural family liaison. We wanted to really get our, our cultural liaisons out more with the families, uh, especially with our newcomer families, working with our fam, uh, you guys see what Claudia's doing in the front and just more of those things and, you know, getting those communications with our admin teams. Um, and also with our equity team and our CFLs all working together for these family events. We felt like that's been a big thing. And, um, it's, it's still, that number still was 75, but we got to get that up higher. So we're still doing some things with that as well. Goal four, uh, this is a goal that, uh, two years ago, that M D E, of all A and I programs, a teacher equity goal to get more teachers of color in your district, what are you doing? We've got the Grow Your Own program, which has been going awesome for us. If you guys know Y I L with Paul, he just, uh, did this grow your own, your own program for the past year and a half and now is a teacher at Eagle Creek High School, not Eagle Creek High School, Eagle Creek Elementary School, um, and, and doing a good job there. You know, and still getting supports from those, uh, from, from Minnesota State Mankato. Uh, so I think the Grow Your Own program has been awesome. Um, and then just continue to focus on diversity, equity and inclusion to ensure all students benefit from various, varied perspectives. District commitment to hiring staff who represent our students, um, with our leadership group that we meet every morning. Every other week, we have someone that talks about, you know, including Keith Gray, we talk about, um, teacher equity and what we can do to get more teachers into our in our district. And the last goal, certainly not the, but our care and committed conversation, something I'm really proud of, is something that I got together with eight years ago with Jordan and private schools. We called it the World Cafe then, but now we've renamed it and rebranded as the Care and Committee Conversation. Proud to say we've got now over eight districts that attend this event. Our, our first event is December twelfth. This one will be in Jordan. And it's really about self-confidence, social emotional skills, elevating voice, advocates, advocates, you guys hearing, for change, leadership skills, and connecting us to school. How we got there, student-led discussions, guest speakers, we're actually gonna do one, just to let you know, we're gonna do one that's just Shakopee-focused with our teachers and with student affinity group leaders are gonna meet with just our teachers and do, we're gonna do one just with just Shakopee. That I mean, you know, if you guys wanna come with that, I can get those things and times out as well. We think that's gonna be good. But this is something, it's real work, real, real words, real voices, real time, real alignment. We've had guest speakers, we've had models, we had a model from Sudan, dark, her hair shorter than mine, talked about her hurdles and things that she had to do to get to where she's at now. And now she's in the Ralph Lauren magazines. And she was able to speak on that. So kids can kind of see like, you know, my skin tone, and I'm, I'm beautiful. A lot of people, when they're, I shouldn't say a lot of people, some kids feel like their skin tone keeps them out of magazines, keeps them out of things that they wanna do. And to have people come in that can talk about the hurdles that they went through, but hey, I've opened doors for you. You can do this, and it's not gonna be easy if those are good. You know, we had CJ Ham come in and talk about his experience being in Duluth as a young African-American male, and how, you know, he's been on, and if you know anything about CJ Ham, he gets on that platform. He really works with kids a lot, but he talks about that as well. So we've had the Humanize My Hoodie people to come in and talk as well. So we get guest speakers that talk about these things. So again, real worlds, real, real words, real voices, real time, real alignment. I know I'm over time. Last thing, upcoming three grant, I'm gonna need some help with this, right? And so we're looking at our LT readers to help with this group, our teachers, community leaders. I would like someone from the board to be a part of this group as well. Student, right, student members, equity specialists, our former Indian education staff, and our cultural liaisons to really come together to strengthen our district's commitment to equity, inclusion, and belonging for every student and design a new three-year plan for our next achievement integration cycle.
I have a question.
Yes.
Jim, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah. If I could share something. I just wanna say, you know, one of the things I just wanna comment on listening to, to Ray talk, you know, I hope that everyone recognizes that we make, we hit some goals, we don't hit some goals, but this team is so action-oriented, you know, whether it's shifting the CFLs from we just interpret to recruit cultural family liaisons, trying to make sure that all of our families have access. You know, all of the work that's gone into recruiting people and now retaining people in the Grow Your Own program, we didn't just find all those people. There was a lot of work and effort and thought that went into it. You know, the, the caring and committed conversations, the way it helps move things forward. I mean, this is just a, a real action-focused group. And I think that the actions that they're taking, you know, show up as you start to see, you know, the, the way our courses are starting to become more reflective of our student body. They're not there yet, but you see that growth on an incremental basis. And I just wanna thank Ray and his team for that.
I just have a couple of questions in there, there's two, I think it's slide, starting at slide six. Obviously, some of those numbers, what we were hoping to achieve with the goals and our results, obviously, we didn't hit the mark. And I'm wondering, is part of it the opt outs for the MCAs? What, what kind of factor does that play into our results? Because I know that a lot of people do opt out, taking the MCAs, especially at the high school level. So what does that play into this number? Is this a pure real number, or is it not really?
That's a really good question. I, we are beginning to try to figure out exactly what is the opt out. Breaking it down by demographics is a little bit more tricky. So I can work on that and see if I can get some raw data to echo back to you. I will say that the achievement gap is backed up by our best scores, too, and some of our other metrics. So that the MCA may be softish, but I think we still have reason to, to focus some energy on the gap.
And I would assume that with the reading scores, obviously, now that we have, we're implementing new curriculum that's state required, as well as the math, that we're just implementing new curriculum as well in our district, that, that could have an impact on numbers moving forward as well. Positive?
Yes, that is our goal. That was the intention behind it. Absolutely.
Yeah, hi. Just to build on that, I have a similar question. I'm just curious about the analysis behind the, the results. And, you know, if, is, do we, do we understand the, the cause of the, of the drop in some of those numbers? And I'm not expecting an answer right now.
And Mr. Jim, just to add to that, too. I know it's a little out of context for the MCA, but you have ACT, right? That's probably a little more, right, to understand that. Do we know what percent of participation, participation in ACT? And then even in that context, I mean, you don't wanna kind of forget about twenty twenty, but does any of that kind of translate into there's still some of that aftermath of some of the district's learning, right, just relative to where ACTs are trending? And we don't, we're not to interrupt here, but I think there's a correlation.
I pulled together some participation either in ACT compared to other districts around us, too, just so we have a sense of how it can turn in universe, and then also the MCA and the opt outs. Is there another question?
No, just in the same, they're kind of same, like, what's the demographic, what's the participation, who opts out, right?
Because I know at eleventh grade, a lot of people are taking the ACT versus the MCAs and not necessarily doing the whole. There's a lot of talk at the state level of not, of taking eleventh grade out of the MCAs and replacing it with the required ACT test instead, because kids are taking it if they're going to go into any sort of four year post-secondary institution after they graduate, that that's more reading open than, than the MCA.
Agreed. And that, that's the same context of, you know, how much weight is given to one or the other, right?
Thank you.
Good question.
Thank you.
I think I stay.
I think you stay.
Sorry.
You do. Next is an action item, item ten point one, course proposals. And Sarah is here to present again. And I didn't give you the title last time, you're Assistant Director of LPE.
And this one should be fairly short. So what I will do, I'll, I'll give you an overview of the three new courses that we are proposing. There is additionally a bunch of revisions to course titles or course descriptions, or mostly just updates, bringing a description up to our new curriculum, or bringing it up. We had an industry partner recommend some changes to a pathway description just to bring it up to industry standard. So those are more the stylistic additions to the revisions. But we have three really exciting new courses that we are proposing. The first one, we heard about from Mollyne in Public Common, and that is Dakota Language and Culture. And then the two other ones are Unified Arc and Unified Robotics. So if you're familiar with Unified Programming, we already have Unified KEE. And so these are courses that are all about inclusion and partnership. You'll have students with developmental delays, and you'll pair them with a mentor team, a mentor student or a partner student, and they are in class together. So the theme behind all of these course proposals is this, everyone belongs, everyone has a space. And so we're really excited to get to propose these three courses. So you'll see the revised courses here. So quick name change to AP Spanish Lit and Culture. It was formerly Spanish for Spanish, the first three, those students all took the AP test. So we're just officially changing the name so we can monitor with AP. So rather than I'm doing AP as an independent study, we'll just do it as a third course. And then Humanities is changing from an English credit to an elective credit because we have our Common List, English nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. We're breaking apart internal manufacturing and construction, two separate courses, so that they're more aligned to the pathways. And then Robotic Process Automation is being titled AI and And then for Social Studies, dropping Modern from US History and Modern from World History, and just tunning them US History and World History, which is more accurate representation of themselves. The interesting part is the new course description. So this is the Dakota Language one. So you heard about the importance of this course from Mollyne. We are so excited to offer this for students, for all of our students. So this course is not just for native students, for any student who's interested in understanding more about Dakota Language and Culture. And you'll see the course description and essential references. And then Unified Arc, again, focusing on some pretty cool art projects, critical thinking and analysis, and problem solving, communication, and quantitative skills, all by matching our, our partner students and our social ed students. And then again, same thing for Unified Robotics. So Unified Robotics is relatively new in the Unified world, but there are many schools in Minnesota that have started, I think there's a competition. So it's really getting some traction. And we've got passionate teachers that wanted to add this to our portfolio. So I think what makes the most sense is to answer any questions about those three new courses. I didn't get any emails about questions over the revision. So we'll just look at the goal unless anybody has a specific question, then I can put to the side. So any questions about the three courses? No question, but I'm just, I feel a little boho with Dakota Language classes. I would love to take it. Yeah.
Just a one nation, cheers. Who would teach the Dakota Language class?
That is a great question. We are looking for the right fit. There's a lot of community experts around town that we could hire and contract with. I know we also have some staff that are highly qualified to teach. Thank you for that question.
Any further discussion? I saw a reference to Lego, so.
Does that special?
I'm highly qualified in the Lego category. Second. Motion by Ralphie and second by Aldridge. Any further discussion? See now that all those are favored?
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is another action item, item ten point two, Pearson Early Learning Center Curriculum Adoption. And here to present is Nick Summer, our Assistant Director of LPE. And can you introduce your guests?
I will introduce my guests. Thank you so much for having me tonight. This is Sarah Mollyne. She is our administrator at Pearson Early Learning Center. So I asked her to join me in the event that you have questions that I can't answer tonight. So we are here tonight asking approval for a resource for Pearson Early Learning Center. And I just wanna kind of remind you of our process. We did follow the district process with a comprehensive needs assessment, and then our articulation team. And our articulation team spent quite a bit of time determining our guiding principles, reviewing guidelines for both parent-aware programs and voluntary pre-K programs. And then they went through a study of those, of variety of resources that were on those approved lists, and made a final decision. And that is what we're bringing here for you tonight. So the clear winner was the creative curriculum. And this is a comprehensive curriculum meant to integrate language, literacy, numeracy through content-based studies, so science and social studies. And that was a really important guiding principle for our team of teachers, that we would adopt something that would be comprehensive in nature. The curriculum aligns very well to the core values established by the teacher teams, and these are listed here. I think key in that was developmentally appropriate practice that really is whole child focused and grounded in data-driven decisions. So this particular curriculum aligns perfectly with our TS Gold Assessment System that we already have in place. And that was really important to the teachers, that there was this match and this alignment, so they could be making instructional decisions in the moment to support those early learners. Like I mentioned, it is a comprehensive approach. That idea of an integrated curriculum was really crucial to the teachers. And that was something that, that they were really excited about in regards to this resource. And then again, I spoke about the data-driven decision-making. TS Gold is our assessment system that we've had since 2018 at Pearson. And we're kind of refreshing that and really doing intentional professional development this year. And TS Gold aligns to all of the early learning standards. And this particular resource will pinpoint ways in which teachers can respond to those various needs for students, whether it is a literacy need, or a numeracy need, or even something around executive functioning, or social learning. So it's very geared towards student-driven decision-making. Should this be approved, our next step would be to work again with this articulation team as early adopters. They would receive these resources and some training initially to kind of get started this spring. They'd like to test it out. And then we have a plan to do some full training at Pearson, hopefully in May during the Professional Development Day. So all teachers are kind of onboarded into this resource. And then an additional day in August, specific to the rollout of the units of study that they will be doing throughout the course of the year. I think that's, that's all I have to raise. Questions?
Cheers. Yes, we're in. And I know that you've covered out some time for me individually, but prior to this, too. A few questions. One, and, and this is something we talked about then, and it's kind of a little further more, a little more research is put into this. I know that there's other components to this, this particular curriculum, including a tool as it's called, Goldfinch, maybe the additional tool. And we did sort of discuss about just the adoption process of this and how it would fit. But it sounds like that a lot of people that have used this curriculum in the past find this to be a pretty positive tool. And it's maybe something, it looks like we're doing a little bit of a preview to this, the spring, that is, would we have access to, to see that and maybe try and use that to determine whether it's something that we want to do down the road?
So at this point, we have not looked at adopting supplemental resources to the creative classroom for a couple of reasons. The Goldfinch is, it is, from what we've seen and what we've gathered from our vendor, it's, it's, it's definitely the TS Gold, but it kind of takes that teacher piece, the observational piece out of it. So the students are being assessed on an iPad. And Pearson has really stuck tight to the legislation regarding iPad and tech use at the early learning stages. So we're not sure yet if that's really a need. We'd like to get that tier one in place and use this resource in our threes and our fours programs before we look at adding supplemental resources.
Well, in our, in our previous presentation, actually worked out great, and Sarah here, this CACR team, one of their goals was student readiness going to Keddie Hearn, which, like I said, I'm a shared person in their private, that that's some good success there. But a tool like this would really help that crew, you know, for, for early screening and things of that nature. Do we have any other tools that we're gonna use for early screening to try to help find students that potentially need extra help before they get to a year?
I would say that the TS Gold Assessment Tool already does a lot of the things that we're talking about. It's looking at the whole child. The social emotional is so key in our early learning years, that they are with their peers and really learning what school is all about. But it's also looking at that literacy and the language and numeracy and all the different components that come with a holistic look at a child. And I would also say that we do talk about the tiers and the different things that come with teaching the whole group tier one. And then what does the TS Gold Assessment tell us? That the, the students that need that extra helping, if you will, the tier two of some students and pull them to the side and do an extra small group lesson. And then perhaps is there one or two students that need that additional? And then perhaps is there one or two students that need that additional tier three support? That that is already in place with the TS Gold Assessment and we are doing it to full fidelity now and excited to be able to do that fall, the winter, the spring, to be able to have those color bands and tell us that data already. So I don't think at this point that there is another thing needed to look specifically at that literacy.
Mr. Chair, if I could expand on that. No, I'm aligned with Mr. Zidic in terms of is this a good time to invest in it or at least do like approve of concept? Not to suggest that the other assessment tools aren't great, but from an I T lens, because I've seen this film before, you implement a partial solution only to learn later down the road. Gosh, I really wish we would have invested in that other capability because the, the cost implemented later in terms of touching twice, you know, whether it's favorable terms of your vendors, all of those things. It's more strategic to solve that in the beginning and have it than trying to realize and retrofit it after the fact. There are soft costs associated with trying to collect information and put another tool, right? You try to move information around. It just seems like we may be losing an opportunity to capture some of that by only looking at certain components.
And what you're saying is a very expensive add on, $10 a month per child. So that's one thing that we're considering. In addition, I, I don't think it's a loss because we are already using that same assessment just through the observational piece of teachers. So we're pretty fortunate at Pearson. We have paraprofessionals and teachers and special education educators that are going to do the assessing all together collaboratively. Not every preschool program has the luxury of having staff that assess in that same way.
And, and that's fair. I'm not certainly, certainly not challenging all the work and, you know, the cohorts that have looked at this. It's again, just more of like, what's the relative cost to early detection that, you know, pre-K to kindergarten readiness? Does that position the district in a better, you know, better light in terms of, you know, from a marketing perspective, come to shock if we look at the tools we have in place? Is it expensive? Yes. But what's the cost of that? Is, are we giving our parent educators the right tools to be able to complete that assessment? And I'm asking more probably figuratively, I'm not suggesting it's not happening, right?
Is this the Goldfinch tool? So that's supplemental, I heard you say. I mean, are, are other schools comparative, comparative schools using it? Is it, is it a common thing or is this, is this like a marketed add on? I'm, I'm just trying to grasp what it is.
It's a, it's a new marketed add on. So I think again, we feel pretty confident with TS Gold and the assessments that we're using to identify early risk indicators for reading, for math, for social emotional learning, the components that are part of that well rounded whole child development. We, we feel really confident in the TS Gold Assessment System that we have.
And there is not a state expectation to do something above and beyond what the holistic piece that TS Gold is giving us. And so that is a piece to think about is that isn't a state conversation or a state expectation to have something like this.
Did I hear this correctly? We've been using the TS Gold Springer since like 2018.
Yes, the assessment has been in check at these schools since 2018, but not to full fidelity. They were using it in some ways, but not to all of the things that it can offer until this school year. So right now, we're doing a fall assessment, that can send it. Then we'll have a winter window and then a spring window to really use that color banding that was shown on there around where the students expected to fall with their peers in that age level. And then where are the students that are above that and where are the students that are not there yet? And so that's going to inform our teachers of where to put their efforts in for tier two and tier, tier three.
Is that typically then, can we take it to the parents?
Yes, yeah. Good question.
Sorry for my question. What's the term in terms of this agreement? Is this an annual renewal? Is this a multi-year agreement?
Yes, we're looking at a multi-year agreement, five years with the cloud. So included in the bundle would be nine physical units of study and then access to the cloud, which provides additional units of study and a lot of resources to respond to the data for teachers in the moment, intervention type responses or extension responses that are all aligned to those units of study.
Flat cost, you know, the course that I have five years, is it paid every year or is it?
So we are looking to do a one-time purchase for all five years, kind of like we did with our foundation skills and our some others.
Sorry. I feel a lot of my team negotiation is all I'm just reliving some experience from recent weeks. So it's up at, from that perspective, that's, that's a, that's a good strategy as well. It's typically you get favorability in terms of, I see. So good.
Just one, maybe it's more of a comment than a question, but I think it is an important question. And I appreciate your time to go through some of this with me as well and help me understand more about what's, what this is all about as far as our early learners go. But I think one of the things that might be good to share is how does this curriculum help transition into our new curriculum that we're implementing in with the Read Act and U Fly and, you know, like I'm in Unified Robotics? So maybe you can explain how this will help build some of that foundational piece to help with kids that come into kindergarten so we have a higher maybe success rate or higher reading level when they come in that they are ready for kindergarten?
I want to say, and then you can jump in. So I think one of the really important pieces in preparation for kindergarten is that whole child development. And we hear that from our kindergarten teachers. They're not as worried about kids entering with knowing all 26 letters and sounds, but more importantly, that they have the skill set developed so that when they get to kindergarten, then they can, you know, build on that foundation, learn their letters, learn their sounds, learn those numbers. So this particular resource does a lot around those early foundational skills. A lot of book reading, planting oral language vocabulary, talking with kids, environmental print, really important things that, that we want our kids to have foundationally so that when they get to school, they can layer on some of those abstract concepts of what a letter is and what sounds are.
Phonics is a huge piece too, that letters pointed out very clear to us in, in early childhood, do we do that, right? So letters training really lifted that backup of how important the phonics approaches are. I also would add, and this is so exciting, to have this opportunity to think about a curriculum that's going to be consistent across the classrooms at Pearson. Right now, it's a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Somebody's doing this in this room. And so really having that clear roadmap, if you will, to have, that goes in alignment with the assessment tool, because they're both from that same company, teaching strategies and to have them both tie in together and to be beautifully knit to, to have these moments in the classroom and organically be collecting that data for our assessment tool, that it will be aligned. So excited and just really thankful for this opportunity to be talking about it and then think what we're doing.
To me, that's a big piece, right? I mean, if you, if you're doing something different before they get to school and then they get to school and we're now all of a sudden a different curriculum, then that is going to make it more challenging for students, just like we're implementing a curriculum for students that are already in school and we're doing, teaching things differently than we have in the past. And so you're going to have pockets of kids that are maybe in the older elementary classes that might struggle a little bit because they're having to learn things a little bit differently because they're being taught differently than what they're used to. So to me, it seems like if we have some curriculum that's going to work well with what we're doing now in the elementary schools, it makes it a state transition. I think that it's what you're suggesting makes sense. You're subject matter experts more than I am on this, but I also know the requirements for early childhood are different than they are for K-12. So there, that's the other piece that we need to make sure that we're meeting those requirements for most students in those pre-K classrooms versus looking at what they need for kindergarten.
Can I expand, like, based on the curriculum that is state mandated, right, from a pre-K perspective versus, I believe, say the assessment tools currently are not in scope, right? Is that, I mean, presumably that's going to be the case going forward or we're going to find later that it is mandated to implement more strategic assessment capabilities?
I don't anticipate that they're going to change what's currently out there for pre-K or for childhood.
Yeah. It's getting up into the vent system pretty good.
This is an action item, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Pearson Early Learning Center curriculum after that.
I will second. So we have a motion by Pearson, second by Smith. Discussion.
I mean, I, I've met with them and I think this is a great curriculum, a great curriculum for, I'm excited for the kids to have it. I wish we would just at least pilot this option to find out what it, if it really is good as others have said. If it's not and it costs too much, then we understand that. I'm pretty sure that the, the company would allow us to do that.
We can skip that.
Yeah, you know, maybe we're missing out and we don't know that until we pilot it. That's all I would ask. Other than that, I don't know.
Any further discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is another action item, item ten point three, School Age Care. And Lisa Ron, our Director of Community Educational Services. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you, Chair Smith, and thank you for allowing me to come and speak about now a proposal for school age care. Was here in September, as you recall, and then again in November. So this is a proposal that we're seeking approval for. And so I'll go through, through that tonight and then answer any questions you may have. So just a refresher of the benefits of bringing school age care in-house. We had talked about this in our previous meetings as well, about aligning programming with district values and academic goals, provide enrichment opportunities and academic support for students, strengthen partnerships with families, schools and community ed. Staff will be public school, structurally public school staff, which will align with district expectations of employees and provide job opportunities and strengthen our programs for reinvestment. And so what I'm going to present to you today is a summary of a business plan. It's fluid, so you know, I'm, I'm going through it now and then we'll have after this what we call an implementation team that'll be getting together to work on timelines and more detailed information. But I will go through this with you and like I said, hopefully answer any questions you have. So executive summary and mission, and we've talked a lot about this, but I'll, I'll read that and, and the school age care program will provide a safe, engaging and enriching environment for students before and after school, on non-school days and throughout the summer. The program supports families by offering extended day supervision and learning opportunities that align with district goals and supports our compelling vision. Operating at district school sites, the program will serve students in kindergarten through grade five with flexible scheduling options for families. The program emphasizes academic support, enrichment, recreation and social development through structured and play based activities with the mission to provide high quality, affordable and accessible care that supports the academic and social emotional growth of children while meeting the needs of families for safe supervised and enriching before and after school and summer care. And I went through this in October, so none of this has changed, but this is basically what the program before and after school, non-school and early release days and summer program would look like. We would be keeping the same hours that the Y currently has and offering care on the same types of days with the non-school days, the early release and then summer. And our goal and objectives are to provide quality care, to support learning, to promote social emotional development, to engage families, and then we have to ensure sustainability so that we operate at basically a cost recovery model, but also maintain affordability for our families. With the curriculum and programming, we want that balance of structured learning time, but also choice based recreation. We understand that the kids have been in school all day. And while they will need academic support with daily homework as needed, we also want to provide enrichment opportunities with our music and cooking and the like. We want physical activity with gym activities and outdoor games. Do the social development and then have themed learning with weekly or monthly themes just to keep that curiosity and engagement going. And on this slide, we have possible staffing structures. And typically, this is what other programs that run them through school districts, what a staffing structure might look like. Having a program manager and office assistant to do registration and tuition building. Each site would have a supervisor, a lead teacher, and then teacher assistants. And the ratio of staff to students is typically a one to 15. And we would provide training, which would include CPR, first aid. C cap is that county assistance program. They have their own training that we would have to go through that's required for staff. And then behavior guidance, mandated reported, reporting training and, you know, district orientation type training. And then the facility use, basically we would be hosting this at all five schools during the school year, reducing the number of sites in the summer due to enrollment reduction. And using cafeteria media centers, STEM and art rooms, gymnasiums, outdoor spaces, having a quiet space for project work and homework. And then using our own spaces for field trip opportunities, which means like bringing the field trips in-house and along with, you know, during summer, we'll be going out as well. So all of that is very similar to what's being used currently. And then we would be doing a lot of marketing and outreach, you know, starting in 2026. With that list there, I won't read all of those, but we'd be working with our communications department and coming up with a very comprehensive communications plan and marketing so that our families are aware of the change and that we, you know, will be able to recruit and retain the kids in the various ways that you see here. And financially, our revenue source is going to be generated from the fees that families will pay during the school year on the early release days and during summer with summer tuition. And then obviously we look at potential partnerships and or grants for funding. And then the expenses are typically just like the school district, the major expense is going to be the staffing with wages and benefits. And then we'll have, I mentioned this before, an increased cost for supplies and equipment in the beginning. That cost, I would anticipate that first year to be higher and then would level out the following years. Then we'd have the cost of field trips and transportation to those field trips. And then administrative costs that relates to like our registration program. And the program needs And the program needs to be a self-sustaining, fee-based model. So in my working history, school age care is typically a self-sustaining program and typically will generate revenue that can be reinvested in the district or other programs and within itself. Also wanting to have evaluation and continuous improvement, so we can include family surveys so we can get regular feedback, staff development with the ongoing training and performance evaluations, student outcomes with observation of engagement, social skills, and academic growth, and then doing an annual review of enrollment and financing and finances and the quality of the program. So this is a lot to look at, and I don't know if you had a chance before, but put in a timeline from November all the way through, starting in fall of 2026. This is what I would say is fluid and could change here and there and be tweaked, but gives you a general idea of the work that needs to be done, you know, as we move, would move forward if approved to open in September of 2026. Let's go to the next slide. Our plan would be to open during connect and assess at one site, which is what they do currently at the YMCA, and then launch the whole program the first day of school in September, and then our first non-school days would be the MEA break. Then I just want to reiterate that, I know I have our partners behind me here from the Y. We have had over a 30-year partnership with the YMCA. The YMCA has provided high-quality childcare with families that have been satisfied for that 30-some years, and we really have appreciated that partnership with the YMCA and all the work that has been done during that partnership. So I am available for questions.
Yeah, I would just start by saying I agree with the YMCA. Both my boys, we started there 17 years ago, they did the Y all the way through elementary and as well as summer, and so, yeah, it was a great experience for them. So I'll leave with that. That said, I really, I think this is a good move for the district, from my point of view. I just like the alignment with what we're capable of doing.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Just a couple of questions. So the startup cost and the revenue to you, does that come out of the budget?
Yeah, and David and I talked a little bit about startup costs, and we need to order supplies, and we can do that over the summer, but have it come out of fiscal year '26, '27. So that's the year that we'd be bringing in revenue, so that'll help with some of that. Yep.
And I didn't know if there may be even a separate college fund or auto account for it. It all goes up under the year. And then I know we had talked about this previously, I use the word curriculum loosely. We hear a lot about curriculum and programming, particularly some of the activities in the STEM. Does some of that support kind of align more with wind time? And I've got some extra, you know, that could probably speak to that. Like, because you, you know, like you said, they're in school a lot, but how does that, you know, from a student support perspective, align with some of the other classroom work that's happening with K-12?
Great question. Our intent would be to work with NICA. NICA will not write the curriculum for, you know, before and after, but we would work with her to make sure that the curriculum that we are writing and establishing would align with some of the wind time or the STEM activities, things like that. So our fully intend to work with her, create more work.
I'm sure they.
But I think it's a great, I do think it is a great opportunity for us to, at least for the students that are attending school age care, we'll get that added.
Bonus.
Bonus, I guess we call it, yeah.
I have one question, just so I'm clear. Would this start with summer programming, or would it start next school?
It'll start next school.
Next fall.
Yep. So our intent would be to have the Y continue to finish out their contract, so their contract goes all the way through summer, and then we would start fall.
And I echo a lot of what Joe said. My son went through the Y program also for many years, and he was very satisfied and very happy with what he got to do, the services of the Y provided, field trips in the summer and that sort of thing, so very appreciative of everything they've done for our district.
And I wasn't here in 2020, I came in 2021, but I heard that the YMCA worked it out apart for COVID, so, and all the childcare requirements that were, you know, that we had to go through in those, in that year.
I just like, just like what my daughter did for the Y program, I love the field trips they did after, after school care. It was phenomenal, and just really like to thank the Y for all the years they've been there.
Yeah, I'll echo that. My kids are actually still going there now, and they love it, and, you know, it's great. It's great that we offer that type of service and have that here in the YMCA that's done that. The benefits to the district for doing this, I feel, are great, you know, for the staff and students, so it's great. We're trying to get it.
I'll make a motion to approve the school age care as presented by.
I'll second. Motion by Peterson, second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next is another action item, item 10.4, Minnesota State High School Lead Forum A and B Foundation Grants. That's the revenue.
Yeah, we mentioned this before, and here this in simplest form, this is approval, which means that we can participate in the Minnesota State High School Lead Foundation, the profit sharing that goes with that, and then the grants for a variety of development opportunities, professional learning, student development, and it's something we've participated in for years. I know on their language, they use the word resolution. We do not need a resolution. It's just an action item for us. Happy to attempt to answer any questions.
So what would it now hold?
Well, it would mean we're not participating in their foundation, which means we lose some profit sharing and we lose the ability to get via grants, free professional learning, a lot of those things that we like to do with our student athletes and students who are in arts in terms of all the valuable lessons that they help share with us, so. Part of me even, there has to be a statutory reason they asked us to approve this, because this is one of those, like, it kind of only benefits us. I don't, I can't think of any reasons not to do it, but.
I mean, it's the money that the foundation gets where they then turn around and award grants to all the people that apply, basically comes from the, the state high school lead is in a sense, sales tax exempt, and so they have to record all of that to the state of Minnesota with that sales tax, which they would have paid on like ticket fees and all kinds of things. Then the state turned around and issues that dollar amount to the foundation, for the foundation, which is a completely separate board that's connected with the state high school, then awards grants to different school districts. They've done a lot with AEDs. They've done a lot for inner-city athletics and making sure that they have the equipment, safe equipment for them to use in their programs. So it is a really good thing for school all across the state to be able to tap into for additional funds for equipment or other things for students and programs.
So this is great for the, that one, they just.
That was just an example, but, I mean, they don't give like field trip or, you know, if you're going to go out of state for a baseball trip or volleyball, whatever it is, they don't do that. This is specifically for student needs in programs. Equipment is one thing. AEDs has been a huge thing that they've provided a lot of grants for, because as we know, they're very expensive, work very fortunate in our community that we've had somebody that's kind of led the charge to get AEDs in all of our facilities, but there are a lot of districts, especially rural districts, that are not as fortunate. And so they, and the National Federation of High Schools also will sometimes match grants as well. They will provide money into the state's different associations for specific things like the, because they know the importance of having that safety feature.
Should I ask you to present?
I mean, to Dr. Remm's point, if we're going to be part of the league, we largely part of the foundation that's also part of the league, I see no reason not to.
I mean, if it helps the students, sometimes you are not.
Entertain a motion. So move. Motion by Brophy, I will second, second by Smith. Any discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Brief departure from action items to do a policy reading.
Here we go.
Item 11.1 is a proposed update to policy 701, and Chad Johnson will present.
Yeah, so I think we touched on this at our last meeting, so the, this one is really easy to read because all the policy changes are in one place at the bottom of the document, and I'm not going to read them all out loud, but it just puts some kind of guardrails, I guess, purchasing process, and as far as like the amounts that require more strategic requirements as the amounts increase.
Yeah, the stuff in blue actually came from IST 196. It aligns with state statutes for school district boards, just saying exactly aligns. We did add one change to that, and that's that red word "and," which was a board suggestion, a board member's suggestion that rather than having it say "or," superintendent or director of finance to have both sign off on that, which seems reasonable.
Or, or.
Well, that's bad typing on my part.
I didn't know if there was a strike through to indicate that there was a change.
No, I just wanted it to look like that.
Just, maybe make it slash "and" or "or."
No, no, no. I apologize, that's me.
It's okay.
I was, I was a check, and you guys passed.
Pass the test. So this is not an action item?
No.
No, so, and we are not, this is not included in the approval of policies that we're voting on item 12.23.
Correct.
We'll be voting on this at a later date.
Great question. We decided to run through the typical, you know, first reading, second reading, and approval. You know, is there, would it be nice to have, yes, is there a level of urgency to do a one-meeting approval? No. So it's kind of out of sequence of the other ones, but I thought that made sense.
Any more questions or discussion on this? See none, we will move on. Thank you, Chad. Back to action items, item 12.1, Toro Ground Master 5900 purchase. And David Drazkovich, our Director of Finance, is back, and we have Simon as well, our Director of Facilities.
Hi, I've come for recommended actions to approve the grounds master 5900, that's what we're seeking approval on. It is to kind of, what kind of the justice stories, we have some older ground masters right now. We have a 12-foot that is 14-years-old, and then we have another 16-foot ground master, which is 11-years-old. The maintenance on these are becoming more costly, and they're becoming past their usable life, and we would like to bring in a new grounds master to bring in to make sure that we are getting to our grounds, you know, athletic fields, school sites, you know, our green spaces, make sure those are cut in timely fashion, since we do rent those out for facilities and our athletic team to use them. So this is something I've worked with that, we, attached is the Minnesota, is MTI quote, it's under Minnesota State Contract, which provides us the best pricing, allows us not to get multiple quotes. There is really only one provider other than another one that's in Minnesota, but it is another portion of Toro, and it just, it doesn't meet their requirements. They only have a 12-foot, we're looking for a 16-foot grounds master to meet these capabilities. It has road speed, which allows you to go a little quicker down the road, so you don't have to load it onto a truck and trailer, allows our grounds crew to just drive it to the next site. The plan is to have the 12-footer at Sabre Fields, this 16-footer to move around the district, and the second one that we have, are having repaired at West Middle School to make sure that all our grounds are maintained in a reasonable time fashion.
Yeah, we had a presentation about this in the finance of facilities meeting as well, and it's my understanding that if the policy that we just reviewed had been approved already, that you would not need to vote tonight, that you would fit within the new policy?
That is.
So, but we're just doing a vote on this because the other policy has not been implemented yet. Yes.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick questions. Does this come out of LTFM, or is there a?
It will be operating capital, and so our building and grounds gets roughly around $100,000, and what we'll do is for the next four fiscal years, we'll reduce that budget that our grounds crew gets to recruit these costs of a one-time purchase.
And then I believe it's going to be stored at Sabre Fields, or is it, where is the unit actually going to, when not in use, where is it going to reside?
The new one will be out at a ground shop, and the 12-footer will also be out at a ground shop, and we're looking at keeping the older grounds master in the garage at West Middle School, so it's always at West Middle School.
Secure, like?
Yeah.
Facility is in the.
So it's only a one temper, just no ongoing?
Just one temper, just no ongoing.
And you looked at a lease option in this?
We did look at a lease option, which was roughly $20,000 less, but by the end of the lease, you don't own anything outright. So if we were to, you know, replace something in the future, we'd have some trade-in value towards the next one.
Make a motion to approve the Toro Ground Master.
I'll say.
I was probably hoping for the 50 dollar.
Motion by Peterson, the second by Valdez. Any further discussion? Is available for rent, I could mow my lawn in like four minutes.
I would like to point out that in the facilities meeting, I did ask if we could have a credit for kids like you, or do to mow the lawn, that that was shot down due to child labor.
They would still need the lawnmower to mow it.
Yeah, well, no, they're not personal lawnmowers, they just show up and, or, you know, use scissors or something.
See no further discussion, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another action item, next on our agenda, item 12.2, approval of policies, and Chad Johnson will present.
Yeah, so this is our third go-around, time to approve these policy changes. If you recall, a lot of them are just because it's time for them to be reviewed, and there's no actual changes. I think the most substantive change in here was related to the classification of directory information and who's allowed to share that. So, yeah, I guess just last chance for question, discussion.
Hold any motion to approve?
Motion by Valdez, I will second, second by Smith. Any further discussion? See none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. Next on our agenda is another action item, item 12.3, memorandum of understanding with the Shock Theatre and Hapton Schools, sheltering and evacuation, and Jim McClosick, our Assistant Superintendent, will present.
Yes, Chair Smith, members of the board. You've heard me talk about reunification a lot. There was a recent news story that of the 25 largest districts in the Twin Cities metropolitan area, 20 are now using the I Love You Guys Foundation protocol, which we have been using now for three years, and I would say we are on the front end of that. A year ago, Southwest Metro indicated they wanted to start work on the I Love You Guys protocol. They requested a memorandum of understanding to use our facilities and also to work with Canon Christians, Canon Christensen, to make sure that our plan would work for them. We now have the same ask from Shockley Catholic Schools, SACS, and again, they're just requesting that they can have access to our plans, work with Canon to tailor them to their needs, and then have access to our facilities in the event they would need to re-identify.
Quick question. Jim, I see reference to both the high school and Sun Path, is that for redundancy? Is there primary, secondary preference?
So we, every school has an evacuation site. What we try to do with the evacuation site is make it the closest school possible, so that if there were to be an event, students could walk to it. Students, so if SACS were to need to evacuate, students would have walked to Sun Path, then buses would pick the students up at Sun Path and take them to the high school for the actual reunification. Yeah, we only have, well, we have two reunification sites intentionally to keep the plan as simple as possible for first responders. The secondary reunification site is the community center, which would only be used by the high school.
Right. But in this context, makes sense that Sun Path is walking distance?
Yes. SACS students become shared high school students, actually, so it makes sense to. Absolutely. Our SROs in Canon have been working with them throughout the fall to help them with their plans.
And we have a good working relationship with them, and other things, transportation and other services in the district, I guess, that we share with them, so I think it makes perfect sense. So I'll make a motion to approve the MOB to the Shockley Area Catholic Schools for the sheltering and evacuation.
Motion by Peterson, the second by Aldrich. Any further discussion?
Just a comment to credit to Canon team and Jim, all the work you've done. Clearly, it bodes well for our district to be able to provide this.
No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Next on our agenda is item 12.4, resolution for combined polling place 2026, and Dr. Remmich will present.
Yeah, this is something that we bring up every year about this time. We have absolutely no plans to run any elections next year, but I think this is typically, according to state law, you need to have it approved by December 31st, and so I just put this before you. It's the same location, some of the language, you know, there's always statutory updates, but basically says if we, for some reason, had to run an election next year on our own, we would run it at West Middle School as the primary site. And as it's a general election year, and there are nothing that I have any idea that we would even propose for next year as a school district. This is really going above and beyond, just in case of, I don't know, the one in a million exception or something, and I don't even know what that is.
Let's just say 10 moves out of the desert. We would have to have, or would we do a hold in, let's just say he moves in January.
We would have to have a special election, because he was, he was less than two years.
Yeah, that's why I said Tim and not.
Right, that's because that rule has changed. So if you are more than two years, help from your turn, everything, you have to have a special election. If you're less than two years, you can appoint somebody.
So if it was like January, we'd do it right away, if it was August, we'd probably just do it at the Kim.
Well, so prior to Lake just did this, and they waited almost a full year before they did the special election.
So it could theoretically be election day, November 26th.
Theoretically, it could, yes.
But if it happened, well, it wouldn't be next year anymore.
And I have it on the lottery that, in fact, I have the hot ticket, so.
Yeah, but I think in that situation, they had somebody that resigned in September. January would have been the two-year mark.
Yeah.
So it was just short of the two-month mark, so then they had to appoint somebody, and then that, they had a special election, then in November.
So that would be the most likely exceptional situation. Yeah, appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to approve, as long as Tim is okay with it.
I'll second.
Motion by Brophy, second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Dr. Remmich will present again on this next one, this is under action item 12.5, compensatory revenue.
Yeah, we shared a lot of information at the RAB, we shared some at the Finance Committee. Not going to, there is a two-year state law statutory change for this school year and next school year in regards to compensatory revenue. There's a lot of kind of unsettledness with this particular funding area. We had a late legislative decision this year that provided a hold harmless and added some revenue. But the law allows a school board to shift the district and building levels instead of being 80% buildings, 20% district, to 60% buildings, 40% district. The total amount being spent doesn't change. In this school year, with that late shift, we decided, you know, that the choice would have been to go with how we had already budgeted, and, you know, in the spring and staff for this school year, or to rip it all apart late in the summer and try to put something together, which we didn't think was a good idea, so that that money becomes one-time, you know, revenue for us moving forward. The action item is simply for the board to approve the, you know, to allow the school district to move the building percentage, if you will, allocation of compensatory revenue as low as 60%, which is what's allowed in the statute. The note, which is in italics on the bottom, is actually very important here. The building compensatory revenue allocation for next school year, we're currently planning to do that at 70%. We have some concerns, we don't think the hold harmless, there's a good chance the hold harmless revenue for this year will not carry over for next year, there's actually a task force looking at this. And then just another note that was added just a little bit ago, the building allocation percentage for this school year with that hold harmless revenue, even with, is still at 71.7% of that, you know, the new total, if you will. So that is, you know, we don't expect to go to that 60%. I think it's prudent to go to 70% with the unsettled nature of the revenue, and to take a kind of a broader perspective, and certainly in light of, you know, tighter budgets and things like that. And we're continuing, you know, to spend within our means, including in this area of our budget. That's, I think, as brief as I can explain that, there's a lot of moving pieces there.
Dr. Remmich, this applies to this current school year when we say fiscal '26?
This current school year and next school year.
Okay, because it's like 26, it's not 26, 27, 27, 28.
No, it's 25, 26, 26, 27.
So it's kind of retro into this school year, because it would previously have been required to be at 80%.
Yes, per though. And we're at 71.7, and it seems to be the prudent move right now, rather than. Building percentages shifted, the total amount shifted, it's all stacked, it's working fairly well, and it just seems prudent to not go back and rip that apart.
I'll make a motion to approve the compensatory revenue, Mr. Remmich.
Second. Motion by Peterson, the second by Brophy, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. That concludes our action items. On item 13, committee reports and other information, let's start with Nick tonight.
All right. Yeah, we have the finance facilities commission meeting prior to this, where we learned a lot about compensatory revenue as well as harmful lawnmowers. So I don't know, I'm going to take a look to see what else happened during our last meeting. Now, a lot happened, obviously, but. I think there was an election. Yeah, I think there was an election very similar.
Thank you, Nick. Carolyn?
We had a short community engagement meeting tonight, where we talked about how the board can engage the community and how we can incorporate our student, school board members. We do have some upcoming events, so we believe Blonde Medical, which I'm going to attend, and the rest of PTO winner Carnival, which is in December, and get conferences. So these are just other opportunities for engagement.
Thank you, Carolyn. Christie?
Yeah, I've got Southwest Metro Board meeting tomorrow night for November, full agenda, just like we have here tonight. I was at scale on Friday, and just wanted to bring everyone up to date. We reviewed in the legislative platform, who's Scott County, which includes schools. And so this is the platform that the county resources that they use for lobbying ethic capital, as well as the lobbyists that they contract with supports and helps elevate Scott County's needs in particular areas. And it's interesting, the areas of housing, unfunded mandates and cost ships, roads and bridges, and then bonding projects, which includes the Shockley Innovation Center. Those are all some of the priorities, and when you think about all of those things, everything kind of works together. So if you don't have housing, if you don't have affordable housing, you're not going to have students, people wanting to move back from your Shockley, because we don't have the housing, so it hurts the school districts. We don't have good roads, we can't have good roads for buses to travel on. So I mean, it all intertwines, and it's really cool to see how it all supports each other, especially that Innovation Center, and that could be a huge opportunity for our students as well with the academies. So hopefully we can get the rest of that funding, make the bonding bill, some legislative session. And then just a couple other things, NSBA Delegate Assembly is coming up, December 5th and 6th. They'll jump in on the delegates representing Shockley and that, so that'll be good to have representation there. And then just a reminder that the Leadership Conference is coming up, January 15th and 16th, at the Minneapolis Convention Center, registration is open. So those that are planning to attend or want to attend, she connects with Tiffany, and she can get everybody registered for our district, there is no charge to attend the conference, it'll all pay for by sponsors and exhibitors, so that's really good. And then prior to the Leadership Conference, there are a bunch of early bird sessions. I believe Phase 3 will be available to be taken, as well as there's now a Phase 5 that is being offered. And Phase 5 is more of the advocacy piece of being a school board member, and how to be the advocate for the junior school district in our own state, and that will be presented by the East Street family. So they've offered it before, it's never been a Phase 5 per se, but they have done it before, and it is really, really good, so I highly recommend that. And then just one last thing, we, nobody's really talked about it tonight, and I know we can't list election results, but I just want to, you know, thank our community for their own alimony response and support of our school districts on November 4th. We were, I feel very fortunate to live in a community that supports public education like Shockley does, a huge vote for our school's future and our students' futures. And so I'm very appreciative and grateful for every single person that went out and voted on November 4th.
Well said, well said. Can't add to that. I have finance on facilities, last, or before this meeting, we have the Academy's Steering Committee meeting on Thursday, also attending England Blonde this weekend, really looking forward to that, looking forward to the Delegate Assembly and the Leadership Conference, and that's it for me.
I had a couple of meetings today, one was three minutes, so I'll just let Chad or Caroline talk about that. Finance facilities, we went over a lot of stuff in this meeting that we did there. We covered some insurance that we're going to have to get. Insurance always goes up, the workers' comp, we had some good news on that one, so it was relatively the same. The rates went down more salary, that was, that was actually a good surprise, that the workers' comp was pretty much the same. Property and casual, can't get away from the increase there, as we've all seen on our own properties. But yeah, as Christie said, everybody that went out to vote on November 4th, right? Yeah. Just want to thank everybody for using their voice and giving, and showing the support for the district.
Thank you, Jim. Chad?
Yeah, community engagement, one of the things we talked about, it's above the screen now, but November conference is probably too tight of a turnaround for, considering they've already started the next ones tomorrow. But just, it's a good way to get our faces out there and give people an opportunity to engage with us, ask questions, share concerns. So consider showing up for conferences, like we did, to get out the vote effort. And then also, December 6th is like the Shockley Downtown Holiday Fest, and so we're going to have, it sounds like a table there, TBD exactly where. But probably looking for someone to staff that.
Jim?
I am a member of the Pearson Parent Advisory Council, you know, that comes fast. So we obviously talked about the pre-k curriculum today, they're super excited about the implementation, as well as some of the kind of the fundraising mechanics, or, you know, whether it's pizzas for the staff during conferences and some of that, because the fact isn't technically a 501(c)(3), like a traditional PTO organization. So with support from Tiffany and Sarah, just to make sure that we're following the right protocols in terms of, call it fundraising, however you describe that. So it was a good, healthy conversation as well. Last night was the end of season banquet for the Shockley Mountain Day. Can't take credit, although Oliver was part of the Green One Coach team for a while until.
He literally flew through there in one practice?
Clearly became faster than his coaches. Just kudos again to both Oliver and Penny, who did an incredible, had an incredible season. Honored a lot of the seniors, including Oliver, we saw her name today, like a few days ago, a dozen seniors who were graduating many years in the future, so that was, was great to be part of that.
Brian?
For community engagement, we talked about how to increase student school board member presence in our community, and how we can incorporate more of that role into the middle schools, the elementaries, and the high school. So tomorrow I'm having a meeting with Mr. Christensen to speak about that. Just some ideas that I had, and some ideas that I came across from the Minnesota School Board Student Representative Event. It was really insightful, so I'm excited to spearhead that.
Brian stole my thunder, he and I are meeting in 12 hours and 2 minutes at the high school to discuss some really good ideas that he had that day, and I'm looking forward to the follow-up, and I look forward to Brian, and Brian being able to share those with the whole board. I know we invited Shawnee as well, she's going to test first block tomorrow, so she's unable to make it.
Tiffany?
Chair Smith, I just want to echo the sentiments of community, and specifically call out the election judges that you folks all approved during that time, there's some individuals, especially our head judges, going just by first names for their preference, but we have Grant and Josh and. their preference, but we have Grant and Josh, and if it wasn't for those two community members stepping up as head judges, it would not have been as smooth, just people they come with years of experience to make it that way. And then also, we have folks working here in the absentee room, some that volunteered to come every single day to, and it was really a public service piece, so I don't know what we would do without those folks. They do the training, they keep up their training, and I'm very grateful. And they also brought a lot of good baked goods and snacks. I appreciate their kindness, all of them.
David, anything else?
No, I'm just thankful to be here and excited to have everyone on the Finance and Facilities Committee. I'm surprised you guys didn't talk about it more amongst finance.
Do you get to drive the door?
I, you know, I'm going to have to take a picture with them.
All right, thank you, David. Dr. Revan, last one.
Thank you, guys have said it all. Well done.
All right. With that, we will get item 14, upcoming meetings and important events. It's dates, it's been up on the screen for a while. Got Legally Blonde this weekend, conferences coming up, plus starting tomorrow, Chad said. Anything else you want to bring attention to, Tiffany?
I'll just be on the lookout for continued engagement. Feel free to connect with me if your calendar gets too crazy, I can help narrow it down for you.
I'll call you tomorrow.
With that, I would entertain a motion of adjournment. So, who? Second. Motion by Brophy, the second by Aldrich. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any adjournments?